Speak alternately to districts versus at-large. And what I mean by that, when I go through, I'm talking about director districts, which are a geographic area within a jurisdiction and only the voters in that specific geographic region may vote for a particular position versus our system for electing school board directors, which is an at-large system. Every voter in the Pasco School District may vote for every position on the Board of Directors. You have numbered positions, but there is no specific geographic region that your position is tied to. So, that's the terminology I'm going to be using today. When I talk about districts, I'm referring to that geographic area that a particular voter would vote in. All right. So, this is the, what I'd like to cover with you this afternoon. Talk first about why we're bringing this presentation to you and some of the considerations around the question of director districts versus at-large voting and how that might apply to our school district. A little bit of the legal background to those considerations. And then discuss some processes and timelines if the Board does wish to consider director districts versus at-large voting, what that process would look like and what the timelines would be around that. And then allow you some time for questions and discussion. And as always, as we're going through this, please feel free to ask questions or interrupt me as we go. So, we're bringing this study session to you primarily because of a public comment that came to the Board in July during a, during a board meeting. And it was a comment from a community member. And if you'll bear with me for just a moment, I'm actually going to play that for you so that you've got the clip. I don't want to.
Say yes if that's the way that they feel, so thank you.
My name's Emily Maloney, and I am here to talk about neighborhood schools and I think what's, is a logical conclusion from them. There's been a lot of talk of neighborhood schools recently, and I believe there's been progress in that direction. However, we do not yet have a neighborhood school board. As you know, there are no school board directors from Central or East Pasco. While I know each of you is doing your best to represent all of Pasco, I believe it would be best to have residents of neighborhoods in Central and East Pasco representing those neighborhoods. In addition, the City of Pasco was recently sued by the ACLU in response to the lack of Hispanic elected officials in Pasco. The City of Pasco immediately settled, removing one at-large position and dividing Pasco into six remaining districts, three of which are majority Hispanic districts. By immediately settling, the City of Pasco was able to keep their legal fees to approximately $150,000. Previously, the City of Yakima was sued, and they were forced to redistrict by the judge, and they wound up paying approximately $3 million in legal fees, their own and those of the ACLU. I believe that the district is at risk of being sued due to the lack of Hispanic directors on our current school board. RCW 28A 343-030 gives a means for a school board to divide a school district into director's districts. It states, "The Board of Directors of every first-class school district which is not divided into director's districts may submit to the voters at any regular school district election a proposition to authorize the Board of Directors to divide the district into director's districts. If a majority of the votes cast on the proposition is affirmative, the Board of Directors shall proceed to divide the district into director's districts following the procedure established in RCW 29A 7610. Such director districts, if approved, shall not become effective until the next regular school election, when a new five-member Board of Directors shall be elected, one from each of the director districts from among the residents of the respective director district by the electors of the entire district, two for a term of two years, and three for a term of four years. I would ask that the members of the Board submit such a proposition to the voters of Pasco. It is time for a neighborhood school board in Pasco."
So, that was the genesis of this presentation. We went back to the Board after that meeting and asked for direction, received direction to bring you additional information. So, that's generally why we're bringing this information to you. The current complement of school board members, according to the information from the public session, the concern was that the current complement of school board members does not necessarily reflect the population of Pasco School District or neighborhood schools. And the concern was brought up in light of requirements under the Federal Voting Rights Act. There is not a companion law in Washington State. But there has been legislative action at the state level two bills in the last session. We're looking to bring a Washington Voting Rights Act forward. Those bills died in session. However, WASDA was tracking them and advocating on behalf of school districts. So, because of litigation in Washington State and around the country, we know that this issue is on the minds of different organizations, on the minds of members of the community. And so, it's timely for us to bring the Board the information so that you can have a conversation about what, if anything, you would like to do with that information. Now, this is a map of the southernmost half of the district concentrated in the City of Pasco. And what it, based on the current addresses of all of you as Board members, currently we don't have any directors who are residing east of Road 36. And so, that's an illustration, I think, of the concern that was brought forward by Ms. Maloney around neighborhood representation for the school district. So, there are a couple of different components related to the concern that was brought forward. One is neighborhood representation, separate and apart from any demographic consideration as far as what the makeup of the population is in any given neighborhood. The other consideration that, or the other point that Ms. Maloney brought forward was that there is currently no Latino representation on the Pasco School Board. As of April 1st, 2016, these are numbers from the Office of Financial Management, the total population in the City of Pasco was 77,346. Of that population, 39.6% was identified as non-Hispanic white, 54.9% identified as Hispanic, and 5.5% other races. So, these two pieces of information would, were brought up as of concern in the, in the public comment and could be an issue for the district potentially for consideration under the Federal Voting Rights Act. So, what the Federal Voting Rights Act does is it creates a cause of action or a path to a lawsuit when an election process is not equally open to members of a protected class. And so, we know members of protected classes are those who are, oh. It's fully up, you're the audience, so it's completely up to you. Okay. Members of protected classes would be members of certain races, race or ethnicity. So, if you are white, Latino, African-American, et cetera, gender is also protected class. So, what we're looking at specifically in this presentation is protected classes related to race and ethnicity. The Voting Rights Act creates a cause of action when a protected class does not have equal access to, to an election process. In order to prove a violation of the Voting Rights Act, a, either a citizen, a voter in the district, or the U.S. Attorney's Office can bring suit and would need to show that, a few different factors. And we call these the Gingles Factors. And this is from a U.S. Supreme Court case, Thornburg versus Gingles. A minority group is large enough and geographically concentrated enough that they would constitute a majority in a single district, that the minority group is politically cohesive, and that the minority's preferred candidate has been defeated. So, those are the basic components of what a cause of action might look like under the Voting Rights Act. And Congress in 1982 set out certain factors for, for courts to consider, especially in looking at cases under Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, which is in essence what, what we would potentially be looking at here. Section 2 prohibits voting practices or procedures that in essence dilute the vote of a particular minority group because of the election scheme in the, in the jurisdiction. And so, those factors would be what we, what we call the Senate, the Senate Factors, whether there is a history of official voting discrimination, the extent to which voting in the jurisdiction is racially polarized, use of voting practices which would enhance opportunities for discrimination, the exclusion of minority candidates from slating processes, the extent to which minorities in the community bear the effects of past discrimination, whether any racial appeals have been used in elections, the extent to which minorities have been elected to public office in that jurisdiction. And then they would also look at the responsiveness of the elected officials in the jurisdiction to the concerns as they're, as they're brought forward. So, in, in looking at those factors, some of those probably would not apply to Pasco schools. Some of them might. Certainly, the responsiveness of elected officials in that the Board invited us to have this study session today. You know, again, it's, it's an issue that is, that is in discussion in the communities around the state, and so is, is a timely one for the Board to consider. Can I answer any questions at this point? Okay.
The word minority was used a lot there. Is that just, is that minority in our, in our community here? Because I'm not sure, but what is the definition there of minority? I know it sounds like a simple question to answer, but.
Totally. I totally get what you're saying, Mr. Lerman. So, now, in, in the context of the Voting Rights Act, we would be talking about racial or ethnic minorities who have experienced historical discrimination. So, in essence, we would be looking at communities of color in a situation like in the community of Pasco where the minority quote-unquote Hispanic-Latino is the majority population of the district for purposes of federal and state legislation that protect the rights of protected classes. I still refer to them as minority quote-unquote. So, to clarify, thank you.
Could you give us the percentages again of the different classifications?
You bet. So, non-white Hispanic is 39.6%, so almost 40%. And this is as of April 1st, 2016 per OFM.
Non-white.
That was Caucasian.
Say that again?
I'm sorry. Non-Hispanic white.
Thank you. Okay. I'm lost there. Okay.
And the Hispanic or Latino population, 54.9%. And other races, 5.5%. All right. So, looking at school districts.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure, of course.
Do you have numbers on, like, the percentage of broken down by races, by who votes? Is that available?
I do not. And I, I don't know, Mr. Lerman, whether that's available, but I can certainly find out.
Okay.
And get more information for you. The, the two cases that were referenced in the public comments specifically referred to the, the City of Pasco and the City of Yakima. Both, both cities have been in litigation under the Federal Voting Rights Act because of, because of the, the structure of their voting systems and the, and the concern that those voting systems were violating the Voting Rights Act by diluting the vote of the minority population in those cities, in both cases, the Latino population of those cities, where the population was indeed a majority of the population in the city, but there was no corresponding representation on either city council. For school districts in Washington, there's a different framework that applies. So, some of the, the difficulties that the City of Pasco, for example, had, they engaged in communication with the American Civil Liberties Union at a fairly early juncture in their litigation in an attempt to resolve the concerns within the community. However, there were certain provisions of state law that applied specifically to cities that were preventing the city from making a, the changes that they wanted to make without going to court and engaging in litigation. For school districts, we have a different framework, and we have different laws that apply to us. So, that's what I'm going to describe to you next. But, but we are, the threshold question may be the same, but the actual framework of options that the district has to potentially address those questions is very different than it would be for, for the cities. And those are laid out in RCW 28A 343-030. I have, at the podium for you, given you hard copies of the applicable, the applicable RCWs that lay out what those options are for school districts. And school districts in Washington can be either at-large districts, the way that Pasco is currently, the way that Pasco is currently set up, or the district can be set up with director districts. So, the geographic areas where directors are, have to reside in the area which they're representing, and they, and they run to represent that particular geographic area. You can also have a combination. So, there are a number of districts that have, for example, two at-large positions and three director district positions. There has been a move from, with smaller school districts in the last few years that have had director districts. Some of them have actually moved to have a combination because they were having difficulty getting candidates to run. So, so that has been one of the concerns and considerations for other school, for, for other school districts, is that if the district were to move to a, to a system with director districts, geographic director districts, that there may not be sufficient interest within the community to, to, to fill the position. And so, that's how some of those smaller districts have addressed that.
Can, can you tell us, what is the first-class school district versus second class? What are those two definitions?
Sure. So, the first-class school district is defined as a school district with a population of, I believe it is over 2,000. It's a distinction that, that's. Yeah, 2,000 students. So, you're talking about very, very small, very, very small districts. These are examples of districts in larger districts in Washington State that currently have either at-large election systems or director district election systems. And I know, Dr. Richardson, you had obtained some information from WASDA earlier in the year. This information does not track with what they provided you. I think they may have been answering a different question. So, if you, if you're looking at them side by side, it's, it's different. And this is not obviously a full sampling of the 295 school districts in the state. But to give you an idea of what the larger districts are doing and what Richland and Kennewick, our neighboring districts, are doing, this is, this is what it looks like.
So, in this case, are the at-large, all-at-large, and the director districts?
Yes.
All-director districts? There's none that are partials?
Oh, really? There's no combinations in that?
On that list.
Oh, that's interesting.
Seattle, do I have Seattle on the list?
No.
Spokane would be another one I'd be.
Yeah. Spokane has a different system. And that's why I left them off the list, because Seattle is a, a combination district, and they have seven positions because of their size. They're one of the districts that, that has seven elected directors.
And Board members are paid, and it just adds a whole other layer.
Yeah.
It is so political, and, and they'll spend millions on a campaign in Seattle, so. Yeah. Yeah. Have a salary. That's what, I, anyway. And it's funny, Seattle doesn't participate in a lot of the events that we go to, so. They're very different.
So, again, this really is just for illustration. If there are particular districts that you would like me to research or to provide you more information on, I am, I am happy to do that. So, the way that the, the way that the law works for school districts is that a, a school district Board of Directors has the option of submitting a proposition to the voters around the, the issue of director districts. If you, as a Board, decide that that's a direction that you wanted to move in, you would take a vote at a regular board meeting to submit a proposition to the voters at the next regular school election. And the question you would be putting before the voters is whether or not the voters wanted to approve a switch to a system of director districts in, in some capacity, whether it would be all-director districts or a combination. And if that's not a change that the Board wants to make, then obviously you would not need to take any action. If you submit a proposition to the voters and a simple majority of voters in the district approve that, then the Board would have eight months to follow a certain set of criteria and adopt a redistricting plan. I did include for you at your podium as well, a map of the City of Pasco Director, or not Director, City Council Position Boundaries that were recently approved by the City of Pasco. Just to give you an idea of what it would look like after a jurisdiction does that. Obviously, those, those districts would not be applicable to Pasco School District. The Board would have to go through a process to determine what those districts would be. But again, just for illustration purposes, what something like that might look like. You'd go through a process, hold public hearings, get approval within eight months, and then that redistricting would become effective at the following regular school election. So, from a timeline standpoint, this is what you would be looking at in, in real time if that was something the Board, say, this year, decided that you wanted to do. Your first opportunity to put something like that before the voters would be November of 2019. And then you would have, assuming that it was approved, you would have until July of 2020 to approve the redistricting. If it's not approved, or if it were not approved by the voters, then that would be the end of it. You would not need to take any further action. The November 2021 election then would be the first election in which those director districts would be, would be applicable.
So, that's, that's the different framework you're talking about? The city council, we didn't, we as a community didn't vote on that, right? It was just, so it was just approved by the city council and it went through? But as a school district, we're required to put a, put a measure to the, to the voters?
Right. So, so the way that it, the way that it worked with the city was that there, there was a specific chapter of the RCW which restricted the city council's ability to make those changes on the, on their own. And they did not have a mechanism in the law to put a proposition out to the voters. And so, the city felt that they actually needed the, a, what they ended up getting from a judge in the, the litigation was a consent decree, which required the city, under federal law, to make those changes. And that's how they were able to do it outside of what the RCW required. They did not have a mechanism like, like Washington school boards have, have here.
So, I don't know if you're going to get there. I've got a couple of questions. I don't, you may get to them eventually, but let me ask them here. So, a regular election is considered a November election of directors?
Correct.
It's not a, any other election? So, the soonest we could do this would be November 2019.
Correct.
When we take something to the voters, is it specific as in we are proposing a combination or 100% director area, or district, director district? Or is it just, do you want us to look at this and we'll determine at some point whether it's one at-large and four director areas, or?
No, it would be, it would be more specific than, do you want us to look at it? It would be either a combination or five director districts. I think you'd, you'd be putting that to the voters.
Makes sense. I was just wondering.
But you wouldn't be, be submitting to the voters specifically what those districts would look like. That's a different process.
So, that process, who then approves those districts? Is it the school district?
Yes.
Or the, the Board, I should say?
Yes.
So, so we could make up whatever districts we wanted? I'm not saying that we would do that, but technically we could approve that.
Well, I think you gave an outline, though, that it has to reflect. We can't try to make the districts, you know, more white or more, you know, we have to reflect, you know, reflect the, the community in each district so that that.
Right. And I didn't include this information in your packets, but it is referenced, I think, in 343-030. The Board would have to follow a specific set of criteria that are contained in a different state law, in the laws pertaining to redistricting, that gives you some, some bumpers around what those, what the considerations for redistricting would look like for you. So, so you would have some restrictions, Steve, as far as how to do that.
Sure. But, but I'm pretty sure we can get pretty creative with those, even with those restrictions. I'm not saying we would do that. I'm just curious. So, these voter areas, if you, or these districts, would they be, are they based on population living in that district? It's not registered voters in that district, I'm assuming.
My understanding is that it is population in that district, and the, one of the criteria in Chapter 44 is that, to the extent possible, those criteria, or criteria, the populations within the districts are fairly equal. So, you wouldn't be able to create something where you had a huge imbalance of population.
So, I had the same, well, I don't know if it's a concern, but with the city, it's interesting, because you look at it, like, in the district where I live, there was, and I'm going to throw out rough numbers here, but say 5,000 voters for a city council position. In other districts, there was only several hundred voters. So, is that still voter dilution, like? Like, my vote counts less? I would consider that kind of a voter dilution. I'm one five-thousandth of the voting population. Are we able to create districts based on equal numbers of registered voters instead of just population?
I don't believe so, but I will clarify that.
Yeah, the problem with doing that, though, is the Hispanic population typically votes at a much lower rate than, than the Caucasian population. So if we did that, it would automatically reduce that when we're trying, that's what we're trying to actually obtain. There's so many layers to this, so many things I'm worried about. I, I have very much supported something like this. I think it's important. I, I do, you know, feel like we need a better, a, a board that better represents, racially represents. I don't know how to say that without, I'm not very good at politically correct, so. But I do feel like it's important. And I, and I think another thing that it can avoid is getting a tiny group that wants a specific change that, you know, might only be in one area, one elementary school, and they want, I don't know, X, Y, and Z, and so they get on the board. There's things that can happen, but there's also things that can happen with, with director districts, like not having enough people there. Like, there was one director district that there was this crazy lady who got on, and they had so few voters and so few people in her little area, this is in western Washington, that cared. I mean, I talked to a, a board member of this, and they were so, and it was one of the problems of forming these director districts. Can we avoid some of these issues? And, and then Pasco, they had some at-large positions and some district positions, correct? The city Pasco? One-at-large, but they got rid of the at-large.
They have one at-large.
Oh, they still have one at-large? Okay. So, and that's the other thing. And the city of Pasco is a paid position, and you tend to get a lot more interest in those paid positions than you do in volunteer positions. So I, I am, I'm, I want to do this, but I want to do it very thoughtfully so that we can, so that we can do it properly. And, and so that we can make sure that we not only have a good representation of our community, but we have something that will be effective in the long term and not end up with some major problems because, you know, the only person who will run is the crazy person, you know? Anyway, by the way, she was a white female, so, so maybe the female, anyway. But it wasn't, but it was a problem. So, I don't know. I hope I didn't say anything that was wrong there, but those are things that I want to avoid.
I think, this is a delicate topic, right? And I, I think everyone that, that watches this or as we approach this, this is really loud, needs to really, just give everyone the benefit of the doubt that they're approaching this in good faith and from a good position and not, right? Because you talk about anything related to race or gender, then it's so easy to say, well, oh, you're racist, or, you know. Let's not, let's just give everyone the benefit of the doubt. So the city council, I think one of the issues they had is they, their primaries were actually by district, but then the entire city would vote on that race. So that, that was a very, you know, disparate thing. There's like, oh, wait a second, is it by our district or is it by the whole city? And so I think that was another issue they had. You know, if you look at the past school board, we've had multiple, it really hasn't been an issue in the past. There have been, you know, prior to the last few years, there were multiple minorities, although there, it's, like you said, it's a majority in our community, Hispanic representatives. But there just haven't been any, run, really, the last couple of elections. I mean, the, the year I was elected, my, the person I challenged, there were just two of us. And Mr. Laramons, he had no opposition, and someone eventually was like a writing candidate, I believe. But there was, you know, so, and that's the whole city that could have run for those two positions. And there was, literally, I was, I believe, the only one until we had a writing candidate. This last one was much different. There was a lot of interest, which I think was great to have, you know, significant involvement. Can you go back to that map where you showed where we live? I mean, didn't show where we live, but the, just the general one. So I'll just be honest, at this point, I'm, I'm with, with Ms. Phillips, I'm actually in favor of this, of a combination, three to two. We'd have three, three districts and two at-large positions. Of course, I'm, I would be always open to change, but at this moment, that's what I'm in favor of. And I would, I would divide it up. That lower part of the, south of the interstate, west Pasco, north of the interstate, and then the east where you said that there's no representative, that would be one district. I don't know the, all the numbers, but that's just a logical, common sense. I'm all about simple, common sense. There, that's, there's your three districts. You know, I, I don't think we need to make things complicated. However, what does complicate this, is what kind of people have mentioned, is that the fact is in Pasco is that there's, you know, we, and Mr. Laramon kind of mentioned this, in the city council, there were three districts where the, the people that were elected essentially needed 200 votes to be elected. And the other three districts needed well over 1,000. So, you know, we, we talk about equity, that's inequitable, right? Because if, if you're, the people that were in these huge districts had to, had to get, do essentially way more legwork to reach that many people and to get a sufficient amount of support to be elected. So, but you have to balance that with the fact that in our city, we have a large, the majority, 55% Hispanic population. And then you look at that, Mr. Laramon asks, who votes? Well, so of that, that 55%, we have some that are citizens, some that are, are documented here but cannot vote, and then we have some undocumented residents. And so I think the real challenge, it gets there, where people, and that's hard to discuss, right? Because then people start throwing out, you're being racist. No, let, let's have an honest discussion of this issue. So the challenge becomes, well, how do you properly represent everyone? Because certainly, even if a family is undocumented, their children are in our schools. If people don't know this, the school, there's nothing that checks your citizenship status or your legal status. Your kid, if you live in our, in a, in chess boundary, you go to chess and, and we will educate your child, and that's the law. So if people don't realize that. However, it may be that only 30 families at that school can actually vote. I mean, it just, I don't know what the numbers are, but if you look at the city council, it's, that there was a huge disparity. And I think that's where you get into the really difficult discussions, because clearly everyone deserves representation. However, you look at the 55%, 40%, but then what percentage can actually even, is even able to, to run for the school board? It would be much less than that, because you, I, I believe you have to be a citizen to run for the school board. Is that correct? So it's a difficult decision, but I think in fairness, and, and like I said, I would support a combination with three director districts, just how I described it, two at-large. I think that's sufficient enough where we'd have enough interest. It's, you know, once you get into these smaller districts, you may be in the situation Ms. Phillips describes, where you kind of get a small group with very, it doesn't require hardly any, much less to get elected, and, and you may have some, some special interests that then suddenly have the same amount of voice as someone that had to be elected by 2,000 votes. So that, and that doesn't seem equitable to me either. But again, so I, I'd be in favor of this. We obviously don't have to decide today, but of a, of a combination, the three districts with two at-large.
If I could just briefly, Mr. Christiansen, follow up on Dr. Richardson's question, Ms. Phillips' question, because both of them seem to relate to the criteria that the district would use to decide what districts would look like. And so at the end of the study session, if the, the board wishes to explore this topic further, I would suggest the next step would be to gather more information about what that process specifically would look like and, and be able to share that with you at a future study session.
That's, that's great, because I think morally, I think this is the best thing to do. But I also want to, e- even if, even if there wasn't a threat of lawsuit or anything else, because there's so many districts in the state that don't do that, that I realize that that's probably a long way off. But I feel like that's the best thing to do for our community. So I want to make sure we do that, but I also want to make sure that we are satisfying those other things and that, you know, the, any lawsuit that might be brought against us, I guess, is what I'm, I'm hoping that we'll avoid. And I'm sure you're going to bring back numbers that reflect that. And, and I want, so I have one question. I, the city has different, is it going to be easier for us to get like three districts and two at-large, even though that still probably won't be an equal representation because that's the voting population? Or is, are we going to have to go to five districts so that we, we do, you know, have a better representation of the community?
I think that that is a question that we would need more data to look more specifically at where the various population centers are. We, we would need to work with a demographer probably to look at that, to look at that data, Amy. And, and I think that's one of the questions that if we do have another study session on this topic, that, that we'd want to, that we'd want to look at, because I can't answer that right now.
I would certainly be in favor of looking at this. I, I think, and take it to the voters. I think we, I like the suggestion, we need geographic areas big enough where we can find somebody interested in running. That does concern me, if we get too small, that, that we wouldn't find somebody interested, and we'd be in the same position that some of these districts are that have districts. We do have a couple of years, so we should be able to do some, we don't need to hurry through this to get something out there to the voters. And I do think it's good to get input in, in doing whatever we do before we just run out with some, some proposal. Now, if we run this, so, I, I actually, we're in a pretty good position, I think. We're not like the city where we, we fortunately have an option that we can be proactive and do something. If we run this and the voters say no, then are we still in a potential lawsuit position?
Yes, potentially. And, and I'm not commenting on whether I, you know, believe that the district is at risk. I, obviously, in a public meeting, I can't comment on that. But, but I, I think that certainly, at that point, any citizen or the US Attorney's Office would have the right under the Voting Rights Act to challenge the current structure and, you know, look at all of the factors that
Then we wouldn't be at fault, would we? Because we are following law. Is it law for us to take this to the voters?
Can you go, can you go back? And we, sweet, I like this discussion, back to the slide where it showed the, the districts that you'd looked at that were, I, I really think our risk is minimal, because the difference to me is, there, there's no favoritism here. You know, the, everyone has the, the same opportunity. The, the difference would be if you say, if, if you assume or presume that if we had a Hispanic candidate, that mostly Hispanics would vote, that more, the majority of Hispanics would vote for that person. See, this is where you start getting into this, this race and making these assumptions. And, and what, what they would be saying is, well, you know, that wouldn't occur, that, that, you know, you're not as likely to vote for them. And, and we've kind of been through this in our country with President Obama, and he was elected. And, and so that, but if you look at that large, I mean, we're, we're not any different than all the other districts in our region. There's no favoritism in our community as far as like the, anyone in our whole district could run, in our whole district and, and have just as much of a chance, you know, to, to be elected. But then when you look down at the details, like I mentioned before, it's like, okay, well, the, if you break down the Hispanic, the number that are citizens that can vote is, is much less. And that's where it becomes tricky. But I don't think, and there's nothing we can do about that, really. So I honestly, a lawsuit could be brought any day, but I don't think we're really at fault. I don't think we're doing anything wrong. And I think we are in good faith, like Ms. Phillips mentioned, it seems morally right. I agree. I think that we're, by approaching this, and I think doing what's the most equitable and with all the scenarios that we described, I think we're approaching this in good faith and not at fault in any way. And again, if you look at our history, we've had multiple Hispanic school board members. This isn't somewhere, we, we live in this Hispanic, a majority Hispanic community where, like, no Hispanic's ever been elected to the school board. I mean, it's not the case. So, and I think there's also a, a perception of some people maybe in our community that, well, if in west Pasco, that's, you know, where the more middle-class Caucasian, and that's just simply not true. I, I live in that area that you highlighted, and three of my five closest neighbors are Hispanic. I, I mean, it's just not the case that, that we're, there's this, this separate Pasco where there's these neighborhoods of entirely Caucasian families blocked off from the Hispanic population in Pasco. It's just not the case.
The reverse is true, though. There are areas that 98%
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, the central, that you said there certainly is less, and they're more, you know, if you go to those schools, obviously, they're major, almost entirely Hispanic. So, anyway, it's a difficult issue. I, I hope that everyone that, that provides input and looks into this, approaches this in good faith, and we give everyone the benefit of the doubt that we're approaching it in a, you know, respectful manner and trying to figure out the, the right thing to do for our community.
Okay.
Anything else?
Not for me. The direction that I am understanding from the board is that you would like to receive additional information on this topic.
So I think it's worth exploring, just taking a look at it and, and maybe some recommendations. I think what Dr. Richardson talked about is very simple and, and makes sense. I worry, and you can get us more information, if we get too small the director districts, that it becomes a challenge to find people that will run in those districts. So, but we've got time, and I would, I would welcome input from the community on this as well.
In your research, when you look at some of the districts that do have director districts, could you give us some information on if there's any district, school districts that would be kind of disproportionately laid out like, like the school, like the city council elections were, to where director area X had, you know, four times the votes as director area Y in, in a school district election? And just give us a feel for whether or not they always have candidates running. When, when you have a small, an area where not very many people vote, and it's kind of an area without as much interest, if they have filler to fill, and then what they do in that case? I had a couple of questions there, but I don't know if what I just said makes sense or not.
No, I think it does. And I can follow up with you, too, if I get.
Because, because what a couple of my fellow board members alluded to is, this is a different situation than the city council. It takes a lot of resources, and I'm not saying financial resources. None of us have to have big financial resources to run for school board, but it's a time, it's a time resource, which is a volunteer position. Some might argue that serving in a position like the city council where you make 10, 11, $12,000, whatever it is right now, brings a resource into a family, and so they may be more willing to run. Whereas if you have young kids or even don't have young kids, this is a, a time resource that shrinks the candidate pool a little.
Especially once they get on.
You know, that's, that's another thing to be thoughtful of, is how can we, you know, we've tried to have forums in areas of higher Hispanic populations and different things. It, it would be interesting if we could even get a committee or something together that would advise the board, because we don't have anybody past that road. And I don't, I don't know if that is possible, but, but as much as, you know, as mu, as many friends as I have, as much as I grew up in an area with, that I've always grown up in areas that were, that were highly diverse, I will never understand what it is like to live that life, you know, until I walk in it. And so some of the comments that, from the community that have really bothered me are, well, they're not here. And if they're not here, it's their fault. And so why are you representing them? That really bothers me. There are reasons people are not here. And poverty is one of those reasons that makes it really tough, because your time constraints being in poverty are, are much different. And so, and so I think maybe we could look at something like that, you know, having a committee that we could go to that would advise the board on different, on different things that we need advising on.
So I would say this, if you can, I think we will continue this discussion. If there's any specific things that you would like Sarah to look at, then just let her know directly. But I think we'll plan to move forward and get some input and kind of a timeline, if you could do that for us, that'd be great.
That's good. Just one thing that wasn't really mentioned that was on my mind is, you know, just because you have a neighborhood district doesn't mean that your representative's going to represent you how you would like. So as Ms. Phillips said, make it a crazy person, the quote, that doesn't necessarily represent you, whereas someone else that, that was in another area at-large could be visiting your schools and be better representing what's happening in your district than, than someone that actually lives there. someone that actually lives there. So just, just simply living in a large geographic area doesn't necessarily mean that that, that person's going to suddenly represent all your values. We can see that, and even just on my block. Like, I don't think I necessarily represent everyone perfectly. We have to find the balance, so, um, but yeah, I agree, that's something we need to look into and, and I'm in favor of it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
When we have a district area, does that mean that that is the area that we serve? And that's, it seems like by being voted to the board, we automatically take on the whole district and the whole district's needs, rather than focusing on just what our little district area. Is that the case, or?
Yes. So just like any other elected official, I, I, I think if you look at the, um, you know, members of the, the House or the Senate, both at the state and federal level, you are being elected by and representing your, um, your constituents, but then you're also representing a, a greater common good. So I, you know, I think that, that it would be interesting to talk to school directors who work in that framework, um, to see how they balance that.
I think that's a great political discussion that we can have another time. It's philosophically, that's a great, that's a great question. So we'll close this part of it, and I think.
We are requesting an executive session, uh, immediately following the study session under 4231101G for the initial, uh, beginnings of the superintendent evaluation process. Just for clarity and transparency, we'll be requesting another executive session at the conclusion of the regularly scheduled board meeting, potentially to continue the process. So this is the beginning. Um, so should you need more time to discuss the superintendent evaluation, we absolutely can request an additional executive session after the board meeting. Um, but we are going to ask the board to, um, retire into an executive session, and, um, I will let you decide how you, the logistics of how you want to do that, to include dinner.
Sounds good. So do we recess into executive session?
Recession, retire, I don't, is it recess? Recession.
Does recess sound right?
We're not running a meeting right now, right?
Well, I think we are technically. So we're going to recess from our study session into executive session. And we would expect it to be about an hour, and we will be back here at 6:30 for our regularly scheduled board meeting.